Good afternoon, all. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And at this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence to observe the senseless shooting again we have heard across our nation today for that fam- those families and those loved ones. So we could just have a moment, please. Okay, thank you. Ms. Byram, can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Ms. Quintern. Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Okay. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Hornick, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Hearing that there are no adjustments to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to accept it, please.
I make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Hornick.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're going to start this evening with Ms. Jamerson, who is here. And we have a overnight field trip request to Hampton for our TSA to go and compete. The costs, as well as the funding source, are mentioned, as well as the transportation that they are planning to take. And this is really a strong opportunity for our TSA to compete against other schools across the Commonwealth. And I believe there is also an itinerary for the event, again, down at the Hampton Coliseum. And we are seeking action at the next board meeting unless there are any qualms about this evening. And we'd be happy to move forward if you all are okay with that.
Absolutely. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to go ahead and accept this.
I'll make a motion that we accept the presentation for the overnight field trip to Hampton.
Thank you. Could I have a second? Second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Best of luck to you all. This evening also, we're- I'm happy to have George Hinckley here in the audience, and he will come and present. Our relationship goes back to last year, before I was leaving Stafford County. George approached me about running the first annual Smart Community STEM Camp that was originally slated to be hosted at Quantico Marine Corps Base. And George ran into some logistical red tape with getting approval to fly drones on base. And so he was seeking an alternate location at a nearby location, and North Stafford High School fit the bill. And over the past couple months, I have had George come in to present to our cabinet group. This afternoon, he was here and met with Ms. Jamerson, who's in the audience, as well as Captain Smith and Major LaCasse from the Sheriff's Office. And he's going to speak to you a little bit this morning about the goal that we're trying to achieve, which is bringing access and opportunities to students, in this case, in an after-school and summer camp format. We have also met with and broached the Boys and Girls Club of Central Virginia, and Kate Lambert, their director, to involve them as well. And the information that he will present about our overall goal will benefit students at each level of our school division, through the high school, where he will talk about the opportunity to go to a camp and become a trained mentor, and then actually be hired on and paid to deliver and lead and basically be a paid intern to work with our own students here in Orange County at both the middle school and elementary school level. So this is really a wonderful opportunity to provide opportunity and access. And George, I will let you take it from here. And when you want Laura to advance, just signal her, and she'll slide it to the next slide.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hornick. Good evening. Any questions? No. Like Dr. Hornick said, this camp came about- the reason it's called Smart Community is a couple things there. The Society of American Military Engineers was one of the sanctioning organizations, and they hold national camps across the country, roughly half a dozen, very civil engineering oriented. But as we all know, as things have changed with emerging technologies, that influx of, you know, wireless control of our houses and all that other- those things that are impacting what, how we operate, resilience, from a resilience perspective, smart cities, smart bases, and then the Virginia Innovation Partnership Corporation, if you're not familiar with them. The Commonwealth of Virginia has a Virginia Smart Community Initiative. So we started a dialogue between the two, DoD installations, smart communities, smart cities. And not surprisingly, when you address it from an emerging technologies perspective, the knowledge, skills, and abilities of the workforce are not fundament- are not different. They're the same fundament- it's the same workforce. And that came out this morning, I think, in the meeting with- when you talk about drones in law enforcement, military flies them for many of the same reasons. Second slide, please. So like Dr. Hornick alluded to, or stated specifically, we were heading to fly drones onboard the base. The SEME organization typically does those either on a military installation or a military facility. The DJI drone, which is a Chinese drone, they said, "No way." So we went and bought an American-based, US-based, and then they decided that the threat was just too much for them, and they said, "Sorry." Did that in March. I turned to- turns out, a really good friend, Dr. Hornick. North Stafford High School was really close to Quantico Base, Quantico, so we could still say Quantico STEM Camp. So that's where we held it. And thank you again for being so generous with full reign of the facility, full run of the place for three days. And that was great. We had, again, Society of American Military Engineers and Virginia Innovation Partnership Corporation, the two sanction- primary sanctioning organizations, but participation from local, state, federal law enforcement who fly drones and support a mission, as well as first responders. So we've had, like he alluded to earlier, we had your deputy chief, I guess, captain?
Captain.
Was here?
Major.
And I believe you fly them as well in Orange County in support of first responders and fire. So it maps well with what we already did and proved. A couple of our naval STEM stakeholder organizations that supported us, Navy out of Naval Service Warfare Center at Dahlgren, and Marine Corps Systems Command out of Quantico. And I remain in very close coordination with Department of the Navy STEM stakeholders. And they're excited about coming out to this region as well. And we had 28 campers. I needed to manage it, my first STEM camp. So we were targeting 32. We ended up with 28. One 29th dropped on the last day. But from throughout, we had two from NRDC, seven from the Eastern Shore in Maryland, and the rest of them were from throughout the Fredericksburg region. Unfortunately, none from Orange County at that time. The simulate- we did- relative to drones, we flew drones in flight simulation, laptop controller software. And then we flew- you see the picture up at the top left, that's the Skydio O2 drone. That's a California company, all US manufactured drone. They donated 10 of those drones to the camp, and I still have them in my basement. They literally donated them, and they were over $2,000 a pop. I said, "We're going to do this in King George with the Y." "How many you need?" I said, "Four more." They said, "Okay." I have four more three days later. And they are a partner for this initiative as well. So as we move forward, hopefully, they will be in the conversation as well for Orange County. The course, you see a little two-by-four thing with a bucket. That's part of the National Institute for Standards and Technology Drone Certification Course that you have to fly in a time, a certain time, in order to get a score. And we had a Top Gun competition, which was really cool. Top 14 flew against each other, and they were scored. We had a tie for second place by three people, and the Top Gun was the kid from Inner City DC. Inner City DC School, and he was in the naval JRTC program. We did esports. So the two shiny objects were drones and esports. We did esports on the third day, and you see that in upper right. They had a very interesting number of different games. We did about four different games, and they competed as teams. So we figured out who won, both from the drone competition and the esports competition. And we'll be doing both of those again this year. Next slide, please. At the time of that camp, this nonprofit didn't exist. My relationship with Virginia Innovation Partnership Corporation and the CTO was such that I turned to him again, one of the sanctioning organizations, and I suggested that we start a nonprofit, or I start a nonprofit, to operate and manage these camps because I didn't want to do it just every summer. I wanted to build a program that was deliberate and persistent throughout the year. So we did it. And the emerging technologies, future of learning, and national security are fundamental to why we're doing this. Again, the Virginia Innovation Partnership Corporation has the Virginia Smart Community Initiative. The testbed for that is in Stafford. But that whole initiative is really about a lot of different living laboratories. And plus, and now this is their workforce of the future piece of it. Next slide, please. So this year, we will be holding the inaugural Virginia Smart Community STEM Camp. And it's going to be hosted at the University of Mary Washington. That is a- it's the Virginia Smart Community STEM Camp because the relationship is between Virginia Innovation Partnership Corporation and the University of Mary Washington. They were gonna- they guaranteed next year we could start it. It took them about five days to give us the thumbs up that they will host. So this will- from beginning this year forward, it will be the Virginia Smart Community STEM Camp for this entire region hosting it. The overall agenda, again, we're going to do aviation drones, and we're adding space. We have a relationship with Ohio State University, new Starlab program. I'll talk about that in a second. We will do esports again. UMW has a new program called UMW Esports that will be launching in the fall of this year as a degree pursuit. We're going to add some human behavior and performance analysis, try to get kids away from the devices and back into working with people, how to work in a team. And we'll do that from an organization standpoint at the camp. And some immersive learning if we are- a lot of it is that anyway, in the drone flight simulation. But we're going to add a little bit more to that. Targeting 48 campers this year, 14 squads, if you will, of 12, being a retired Marine. They're squads, little groups of four each, if you will. And our target is the Fredericksburg region. So one of our main reasons we're here is to get some high school kids from Orange County. Next slide, please. This is about the workforce of the future. I don't say workforce development. It is, but it's not. It's not open job requisitions, and it's not a contract with a community college to do training. This is about the kids. This is about getting at them, middle school, high school, and some down in the elementary school. This partnership is really formulated in the Fredericksburg region. I have a memorandum of agreement with the Rappahannock Area YMCA, and I have a very close relationship with Skydio. They just issued their- Skydio for All is actually now a program with that company. It didn't exist before the STEM Camp last year. It does today. They just published their annual report, and our logo is in their report on page 10, which really validates that they believe in what we're doing, and they want to do more. Orange County is part of that purpose, is to get to where kids typically wouldn't even see these drones. And not necessarily theirs, but they will give their drones so that we can educate and train the kids. Little Arm Studios is a company that provides the simulation software called Zephyr. The CEO of that actually came out of George Mason University, Virginia Series Games Institute. That's where the company was incubated. He'll be coming back to Virginia this year. Rappahannock Area YMCA, and I'll talk about the boys, is really about the facilities and certified staff. So we're talking about putting capability there to get to the kids when they're out of school and after school. And Skydio, again, I talked about them. It's really- they're developing curricula. So is Little Arm Studios. So we're rolling that into the experiential activities with the drones as well. And I'll talk about that in a second. And then us for program project management and bring the technology and the subject matter expertise to you, to the schools, to the YMCA's and the Boys and Girls Clubs. Next slide, please. I don't have to read this. It's fundamentally, it's about one of our partnerships is with Joint Hypersonics Transition Office. That's a new office in the Office of Secretary of Defense. And they are writing curricula related to hypersonics, and they are giving it to K-12. So I'm a channel partner for them to bring it to you in after-school programs and out-of-school programs. And that's what Shirley C. High Middle School is doing. In Stafford, we- they fly either in simulation or actual flight on Wednesdays. And now on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they are bracketing that experience with curriculum. That's the hypersonics curriculum. And I've talked about the last two. Next slide, please. So for here, basically, it's a pull-out YMCA and plug-in Boys and Girls Club. As of this morning, I signed an MOA with the Boys and Girls Club of Central Virginia with Kate Lambert. So we're ready to put the program together here in Orange County, working with the schools, working with Boys and Girls Clubs. And basically, the same- yes, please, events. So this was a proposal, just a proposed methodology. It's a notional on how we might do it here. Proof of concept, late semester. I know you're going on spring break soon. And then six weeks, I think you have, for the rest of the semester. Not a lot of time, but that's about what we did last year at High Middle School. Just go in with some laptops and the software, just see what the level of interest is in the middle school with the kids. And then we let them fly drones right before Christmas. So we could probably do that right before they go on break. Kind of sets the tone for next time they come, when they come back. And now we're hitting the ground running, building the program in the spring semester. The out-of-school program for the YMCA's is their already existing Power Scholars Academy. In the mornings, they do academic. They address the academic challenges and issues. In the afternoon, they do enrichment activities. We're going to plug into the enrichment activities with emerging technologies, drones as an example. And then fall semester is when you probably could begin some more formal implementation in the middle school. But I like the ecosystem you have sitting right here with the Boys and Girls Club and the middle school right across the parking lot. It's really- I think it's an opportunity, opportunity. And that, I think, is mostly what I was presenting. Couple other things. I've been- I was at Capital Technology University just a couple weeks ago. They are literally a technology school. There's not much else there other than a place to sleep and go to labs. But it's really cool. NASA sponsorship of a program they have. They would be interested in a relationship with Orange County Public Schools to leverage that, to include possibly building a small planetarium to do some of your own. Joint Hypersonics Transition Office, already talked about. I've got the curriculum for that, and I'm sharing it with Dr. Hornick and his staff. Ohio State University is one that really gets my attention. I'm working with Dr. John Horak. He's leading with Starlab Project. Starlab Project is a new commercial, industry-based, low Earth orbit replacement for the International Space Station. A lot of opportunity there for jobs moving into the future, and the launch is 2028. So guess what? Sixth graders, it's about the right timeline to begin. So they're going to begin helping- they will help us build out the curriculum to add space to the after and out-of-school program. VIPC, I talked a lot about. One of the conversations I had before coming here tonight was with Mr. Erie, the CTO. He would be interested in the conversation with the county and with the schools of a pilot program for smart schools here in Orange County, where a lot of the technologies he's working on for Virginia Smart Community Initiative could be deployed into your schools for a number of variety of reasons to be talked. If you're interested in that, we can facilitate that conversation. And from the law enforcement, first responder perspective, the Public Safety Innovation Center didn't exist last spring. The gentleman who helped me with the drones program at the STEM Camp is now the director. He's a retired deputy chief out of York County. And he's now the director of the Public Safety Innovation Center for the Virginia Innovation Partnership Corporation. And I have met with Rappahannock Emergency Medical Services Council. Their interest is drones as a first responder. So now, drone dispatching, a drone upon dispatch of a mobile ground unit to get better insight into what's going on on the scene. And I think the example we talked about today was fire deploying an IR-censored capable drone to determine where are the hotspots, what do we need to send the crew.
Yeah, we were informed with the brush fire that happened last week. That's how the EMS addressed it. They brought the drone back, flew it over to identify the hottest spots in the fire. And then that's where they were able to deploy the firefighters to address it. So just really creative ways that people are using drones.
And the workforce for drones is just going to explode. So we need to build it. And this- the camps are really about exposing kids to opportunities. Maybe give them more of a reason to study certain topics and subjects in class and give them some sense of what that means. I went to College of Missouri, and I was a Marine, so she got to show me. And that's a way to do it. Next slide, and I think it's- A little bit on VIPC. If you're not familiar, if you heard of CIT, Center for Innovative Technology. VIPC is the former CIT. It was rebranded to align with legislation issued by the General Assembly three years ago that established the Virginia Innovation Partnership Authority. In that language, it named CIT as a nonprofit operating manager. That is now VIPC. And I talked about the Virginia Smart Community Initiative. It is one of the strategic initiatives for VIPC. So you're in the game at the top with VIPC and working with David Erie, who I worked- my other hat with him is I'm his liaison for DoD and federal agencies. I've got two hats with VIPC, and this is the workforce of the future conversation. Any questions for me? We're about cultivating human capital, and I want to work concurrently and complementary with what the schools have as their responsibilities. He could figure out where to put it in his curriculum. That's not what I'm worried about. I'm worried this is about after-school, out of school, and getting to the kids where they are.
I just got an observation. It's just another testament to having Dr. Hornick at the helm and connections with good folks like yourself.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for coming out. And definitely, the drone industry is only going to get more needs, so it's good stuff.
I think it's a great opportunity. Welcome in. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And the best thing, too, was he- when George came to me here, in both scenarios, at North Stafford and here, he is not selling anything. This is not something that we- it is about an opportunity, and we seek other sources of funding to get the technology, to pay the mentors. And it's an opportunity for our students in an after-school and in a summer programming format to have opportunity and access. And so that's what I found particularly refreshing, is this was not a- it's not a sales pitch. It's not an agreement that's tied to money, et cetera. Of course, there's costs associated with anything you want to do, but that was what I appreciated, George, is let's talk about a way that we can engage students and meet them where they are using some of the existing partnerships. You can bring expertise and people. We have access to the students, and your Boys and Girls Club has access. They have personnel that oversee students in an after-school and a summer programming venue. So that triad, so to speak, makes a lot of sense.
Sir? Did you have-
Well, Dr. Hornick sort of answered my question because I listened to all this. Sounds wonderful, but, you know, my question was going to be, what's the cost?
Well, as with anything, you need resources to do a lot of these things. But the drone costs in and of themselves are expensive, but they're going to give them to us. So there are costs associated. Here's a second example, is the software for the simulation. You have a lot of the assets that I would put in a cost proposal to do it. You have the assets, the gaming PCs we identified, that were in storage because of COVID. Those are things that can be used today. We can put software on those. So you really start- and I negotiated the contract with Little Arm Studios to get the price point down on the software, and now they've committed to donating all the controllers. So I'll buy the software. You've got the hardware, and they're going to give us the controllers. That's a good deal.
More specifically, you talked about having 48 students. What's the cost per-
Oh, for the camp. I'm sorry. The camp cost is 600 per student.
Okay.
But like Dr. Hornick said, we're- I don't want this- My goal is to not have to have the camper pay that cost. I'm going after money so that it's minimally $100 registration fee to come. They should have some skin in the game to come to the camp. It can't be- it doesn't work well if it's free. It just doesn't. So at least 100 bucks. If I can get enough money, I'll give it back at the end if they show up, but you got to show up. So but right now, the way we're- the money we're going after to cover those costs is 600 a camp.
Okay. I just wanted an idea. That's fine.
Yes, sir.
So when we were meeting this afternoon, Jessica Sarver was in the room as well, who's our- Orange County, who's our STEM coordinator, among many other things. I know from her, if you wanted to talk briefly, she's seeking some grant funding already.
We can count on a grant invite for AirGen. And they, you know, every year we get funding from them. So we're going to ask them if they would allow us to use that grant for the purpose of paying for the kids' camps, so that the kids could go at minimal cost.
It's awesome.
Well, at minimal cost. So we're hoping that they'll let us use that as a grant.
If I may, I'm not sure it was clear. Those high school kids are critical because they are your- what we're doing at High Middle School in Stafford is I am paying them as W9s to be- they are paid interns to be the mentors for the middle school kids. Because they're familiar with all the software. They're familiar with the drones because they attended the camp last year. So we're building our cadre of mentor proteges, right? And it's worked out better than I expected it would, to be honest with you. High school kids were a little tentative at first in the middle schools, but after three or four sessions, it was like older brother and older sister work. It was- it really- it's really worked out well.
Which is why Ms. Jamerson was here this afternoon to help us because she- She is a drone pilot, number one, and she was already in the inner workings of- a drone pilot, number one, and she was already in the inner workings of building drone technology and pilot, et cetera, that is tied to this into her existing curriculum inside of her classes, inside of robotics. And so she was here to, to help guide us on identifying four or five students who are willing to commit. And again, part of it is we would want, similar to our lab school idea, if we're going to, if we're going to help provide some funding and help expedite your process to become a teacher, we want you to come back here and teach in the region. Same thing here. We want to find our students who, one, have an interest in this, two, we are comfortable having them in leadership capacity. Of course, they're going to be supervised either by school personnel or Boys and Girls Club folks depending on the venue, but also ones who are willing to, to come back and provide that investment back to the younger students so we can provide that exposure and experience to them as well.
So the, the summer camps, how do you, how, obviously you said that we were going through, Ms. Jamerson, about picking four students?
We were, so the, the camp total is bringing 48, and so I was hoping to sneak by, maybe to get George to let us get five. We were going to hope to get four to five high school students who could go to the camp, and then they come back and they essentially become.
Train the trainer.
Smart camp, right, they're trained as their smart camp community employees, so to speak. And then they are part of our folks coming in, but we're also seeking, for instance, Mr. Rutter has interest in intrigue in airplanes, and this is why we brought in Major LaCasse, who has a personal interest in drones, and he's, he's looking for these type of opportunities. So we're not only seeking the, the high school students to be able to come back after going to the camp, but also other folks in the community who might have interest in this, who might be willing to volunteer their time as well to come in and engage with the younger students, the middle schoolers, and even upper elementary school kids either after school. You know, we run our own type of after school club, or in the summer, when many of the students are with the Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girls Club can embed some of this work into their academic enrichment, what they do. And when George and I, when we went and he met in Charlottesville with them, they have a gentleman on staff who also happens to be, who, whose title is STEM coordinator. He does something with.
STEM coordinator.
STEM coordinator for the Boys and Girls Club and has, has a personal interest and a hobby for drones and drone technology as well. So that wasn't planned, but it happened to work very much in our favor.
I would also like to, if we would be able to get the opportunity to actually come see when the camp is, is starting and at least a day or so to see how it's working.
Of course, of course.
We'd love to do that.
I'm happy to bring a few drones here and do a little fly thing too, if you, if you're interested. If you've got, if you've got drone pilots, I have the drones, so actually have one on my car.
Yes, we would love, we would love for you, absolutely, to come and see the opportunities.
If you wanted to arrange something, give me a gymnasium, fly indoors preferably, we could do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, George. Appreciate it. All right, thank you, madam chair, members of the board. At this time, I'll invite Dr. Honaker to come forward, and she will review our 2324 Perkins Grant Funding.
Yes, I'm, I'm coming before you this evening to ask for your approval to apply for these funds that we apply for every year. As you know, the Perkins Funds are used to strengthen our students' knowledge and technical and employability skills in our CTE programs. So that would be for our middle and high school students, and the grant is around $93,000. And what I do is every year, I, I put the bulk of the money towards equipment because, as you know, these hands-on courses require a lot of different types of equipment, so the majority of that money goes towards that. A small portion goes also to our transition specialist, who is the sped liaison for our students who are graduating and moving into the workforce. So we give some money to that, and then also a portion of the money goes for training teachers, sending them to the state conferences or other, other trainings that will help them be up to date on their skills as well because they're teaching a lot of classes that change rapidly. So, any questions?
If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to go ahead and approve this tonight.
Yes, I make a motion, approve the Paul Perkins, Carl Perkins for grant as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Honaker.
Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. So we will move from the money we are seeking to supplemental appropriations, and Mr. Honaker is here. Gary.
I guess you're well versed on the Perkins Grant now, and so what I'm asking for is a supplemental appropriation of $20,930.36. This is additional funds above what was budgeted in the original budget, so, any questions? Thank you.
Is everyone comfortable going ahead and approving this as well?
Sure.
I make a motion, we approve the Perkins Grant of $20,930.36 to our budget.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, madam chair, members of the board. Next, and we're happy to bring this forward, Doug was on the beat from late, but Mr. Arnold's been working tirelessly to get some resolution to the lingering Locus Grove Elementary School gym issue. This is tied to the water leak, that's a, not the best term to call it, water break that happened, and so we have received a few proposals, and we are asking for Miller Sports Construction, and we have discussed this with the appraiser and had no objection, and to have them come in and complete the flooring work. And you can see the scope of the work includes removing the bleachers and taking out the flooring that is still under there, and replacing the entire gym so that all the seams and all the boards and all the floors match. Then we will have a seamless finish, and it also includes getting us back to the original with painting, and so it'll look like it was never an issue. And so we would appreciate the board's support. And Marshall, is there anything you need to add to that?
Sir, I'm just here, if there was any questions, we have definitely put measures in place so that this does not happen again, not only at where it happened, but next door at the sister school, sir.
Yeah, that's not like a little flood. I mean, a little leak, that's a flood.
It was.
So with that.
I'll make a motion.
I just have one question, and that is, you said you, we talked to our insurance adjuster, do we expect our insurance to cover 100% of this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We do.
That's a good answer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Yes, ma'am. I'll make that recommendation or the motion for recommendation on awarding that contract to Miller Sports in the sum of $151,350.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
All right, thank you, madam chair, members of the board. And last but not least, this evening, Marshall and I can both speak to this as well. As per the usual, East Orange Little League is seeking our permission to, to use three fields, one at the front of Locus Grove Middle School, when you come off a flat run road at the front of the building. This is not, this is not the ones, of course, behind the building, as well as the fields behind the primary and elementary school. And so they have renewed their commitment to maintain the fields, good stewardship, and they also have proven their insurance liability requirements, and they would like to extend the use of the fields from this July 1st through next June 30th.
This is all standard, nothing really changed in that.
That's right, ma'am. Nothing new, madam chair.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. I'd entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve the renewal of the Locus Grove Ballfields lease agreement as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
I was going to say a few words. These fields, of course, are down in the Locus Grove area, and they're, they're behind the elementary school. This is a, this is land that we do not use at all. It was just grown up, and these organizations came to us and asked if they could use it, and they've maintained, not only they maintained it, but they've built equipment there, and they've built, basically behind the primary and elementary school, they basically built the fields. The one down at the middle school already existed, but the middle school has no use for that field at all. And the middle school was supposed to include extra fields that were above and beyond what the middle school could use, so the county could use them. So I, I strongly support these because the organization, the ones behind the elementary school and the primary school, you need to walk back there and see what they are. They're really nice fields, and it's all done by this organization. So I'm a very strong supporter of this. Okay, I'm ready to vote, madam chair.
All righty. You did second?
I seconded.
Okay, you seconded, okay. I'm just making sure. All right, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. That is all this evening for reports and recommendations.
Okay. Ms. Byron, we have review of next month's calendar, I mean, agenda. I think we took care of a lot of that.
Okay. Did you want to talk about?
Yes, that would be the conference.
So for April, of course, spring break is the first week, so that moves our regular meeting to April 10th. And we also wanted to put out there that Dr. Hornick is attending a conference, the 23rd, 24th, 25th, which conflicts with that. Traditionally, the conference that he's attending was the first week in May, which is why when this schedule was made, flipping mine and not yours, in May, we had moved the meeting to the 8th, anticipating that this conference would be then. So I don't know if you want to adjust the 24th to the 1st, or, but I'll leave that to you guys to, to discuss.
What if we just did the 17th back to back?
That's certainly an option if we've done that before.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
You okay with that?
Just moving it to the.
I'm fine. I won't be here, I'll be away.
Okay.
Work.
All right, so we'll just move the 24th to the 17th then.
Okay.
All righty. And then.
Jim, do you have any questions? Is that okay?
Well, I'll be honest, I don't know my schedule because it's at home. I don't carry it around with me. I believe I'm scheduled to be away on the 17th.
So then we have to do the 1st then?
Well, it looks like that we've pretty much taken care of, let's see, all the, the meeting, I mean, business for this month, so going into the 1st, well, I mean, the 10th, so, I mean, we could just move that work session to the 10th and then go from there and just have one meeting.
Do the 10th or the 8th.
Combine the regular session and the work session?
Yeah, because since we can, you know, we've done pretty much all the work tonight, we approved everything that was on the agenda for, for the next meeting, so I'd just say just move that work session to combine them, do whatever, because.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
That's fine with me.
So only having one, and we can either, I mean, leave it at the, the 10th.
Yeah.
So no 17th and.
Or 24th.
No 24th. So only one meeting.
So regular and work together.
Good?
That'd be correct.
And then just for the rest of May.
Thank you.
We will have, the 18th is the last day of school. There's a prep meeting on the 19th. Graduation is on the 20th, and we'll have more details and things for you as that gets closer. And then there's a work session on the 22nd because the 29th is a holiday.
Okay. All righty. Sounds good. All right.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Yes. Because his meeting has moved, could we do the 8th one on the 1st instead of the 8th?
Let me see.
Of May?
Instead of the 8th?
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
We'll space them closer together.
Sure. I mean, it's good with me.
Seems, seemed like a reasonable suggestion. I think it works my schedule okay.
Okay, so just move that meeting to the, the 1st?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, and then looking at the agenda, we pretty much took care of everything on that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and obviously it will change as we add things that would have been on the work session at the end of.
Correct, correct. Okay. All right. Well, with that, Mr. Jones, closed session certification, please.
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following discussion of personnel or the performance of a division employee as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We're in closed session. We're in closed session. And then you got your motion, right? Okay. Okay, all right. I'd like to call this back to order and recertification, please.
Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters where lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
I just need a second.
Sorry.
Oh, did you say aye?
Yep. You'll say a second, okay. So, uh, let's see, Mrs. Anderson.
I'm sorry, second.
That's okay. I'm blanking out, too. Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the vote as follows: Four aye votes, no no votes, and one member absent. The resolution is approved by a four to zero vote.
Thank you. Dr. Horneck, disposition of personnel actions.
Yes, ma'am. We seek approval for the personnel actions as presented in closed session.
Thank you. Can we have a motion, please?
Make a motion that we approve the personnel presented to the school board during this closed session to include retirement, resignation, employment, transfer, and termination, and extracurricular and coaching appointments.
Okay, can we have a second? Second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. And there is no other business?
Okay, maybe I'd ask Laura to send us a calendar since we changed a couple of dates.
Okay.
That would be great if you could do that.
Okay, I will. All right, with that being said, I'll adjourn this meeting.